Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the September 7, 2016 Lorraine County Board of Commissioners meeting. Our dog, Warden, has our dog today.
You have to have a microphone.
That's okay. Thank you for having me.
Yeah, I never remember to grab that thing.
Good morning. Here's a, we believe around four-year-old female beagle. There's another one that they came in together from Wellington. So we have two, the colors are flip-flopped on the other one, so it's cage 31. She'll be available tomorrow. Very nice dog. Very nice.
We have a certificate this morning for Barbottanis Administrator of CSEA recognizing child support amnesty program.
I'm reading here. It says, "Recognizing the employees in the agency in their continuing efforts in receiving funds that provide family stability, help children grow in a safe and healthy environment with the opportunity for a better life. During August 2016, they have reinstated 160 driver's licenses and collected $37,524.36. This money represents funds to custodial parents during the amnesty program that they likely would not have received." So Barb, did you want to come up and receive this?
I'd like to thank the Commissioners for this. You know, we work very hard at child support. Child support's a very important community agency and we have extended, I'm aware, you know, I'm the new kid in town, so I'm aware that many of the child support obligors in Lorraine County are used to having child support amnesty month in August. I concluded that we should have it in August because that's when the parents are buying school supplies and that's when the parents are buying back-to-school clothes. We have extended our child support month for this year only to September because I'm aware that the obligors of child support in Lorraine County are used to it being in September. So we're looking to capture as much funds for the custodial parents as we can get. So, once again, I want to thank you for this. It means a lot.
You guys do a wonderful job and it's a tough job, child support.
It is a tough job. You're right.
It's a difficult job. You can't make anybody happy, it seems like. But you guys do a wonderful job, you and your staff.
Thank you. You know what? But for my wonderful staff, I don't know, you know, where I'd be or if I'd be here. I work with nothing short of brilliant supervisors and the staff members and they're so committed to these children and the custodial parents. So, yeah, you're absolutely right, Commissioner Kayla.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And then we have Mr. Harper and Ms. Myers-Fisher. Approve an enterance purchase and delivery of service contract with United Way of Greater Lorraine County for fiscal year '17, Healthier Buckeye Grant promoting self-sufficiency and income stabilization of low-income families through case management services in the amount of $177,864 effective retroactive July 1 through June 3, 2017.
Mr. Harper?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, thank you for having me. I want to thank Melissa Myers-Fisher for suggesting that we apply for this grant. It was a great opportunity for us to bring some additional funds into the county and thank to the Commissioners for supporting us in this. We do have a PowerPoint presentation, I think, that's up.
Ernie's coming right behind you there.
All right. Very cool.
Use the arrow keys or use the mouse.
Oh, use the arrow keys. Yep, thank you. So we're going to give you, we'd like to give you a little update on the work of our United Community Assistance Network. I'd like to say that this group came together because when we looked at our 211 data, so just to recall that 211 is our information referral service, it's available 24/7 on the web and through a mobile app, we saw that this was the greatest, what the greatest unmet needs were, were access to housing assistance, to also utility assistance and so forth. But the work that, all the work that we're doing now is really using this collective impact model and it really means that instead of just going it alone or with a few partners, we try to bring together multiple partners to work on some of our most complex wicked problems that we have here in Lorraine County. And so we believe that government, the nonprofit sector, and the business sector, if we coordinate ourselves, our goals, we can really accomplish some great things. So collective impact, it's really a significant shift in the social sector. Traditionally, what we now call isolated impact was the way to go. You'd fund an individual program, they would serve a group of people and hope to expand it someday. The underlying premise with collective impact is no single organization can really create the large-scale impact that we need. There's no silver bullet. These are systems problems that require system solutions. And strong organizations are necessary but not sufficient to bring about this change. Just in terms of some of the needs in Lorraine County, just a representative sample of some of the challenges that we have, we know, for example, that children starting kindergarten in Lorraine County's poorest school district are half as literate as those starting kindergarten in the most affluent school district. We know one out of every four students do not graduate from high school on time in Lorraine County and one in four children live in a working family that doesn't earn enough to be self-sufficient. And I would submit to you that there's a relationship between poverty, obviously, and educational success. We also know that since 2006, mortgage foreclosure filings have continued at all-time highs, averaging 2,114 per year. And in terms of diet and exercise, we know that both adults and children do suffer from being overweight and obesity. And I've got a statistics here in terms of four out of every 10 third graders are overweight or obese in Lorraine County. And it's not surprising that Lorraine County youth spend a lot of time on these media. 3.6 hours on their cellphone, 2.7 hours on their computer, and 2.6 hours watching television. Now, being a geezer myself, I kind of looked at that, added them up until one of, a younger person explained to me that they're doing multiple things at one time. So it doesn't necessarily add up, but it's a lot of time. And then in terms of suicide, we know that more than one in 10 youth have seriously considered suicide in the last year. So as we, at United Way, as we began to put the structure together for this collective impact approach, we brought together experts from throughout the community to help us identify what we should accomplish. We started with the end in mind. So in terms of educational target outcomes, we looked at at-risk families, we wanted those children to arrive at kindergarten ready to be successful. We, you know, we ultimately want that first day of school to be no surprises for the school. We don't want kids to show up that they're not familiar with. We want children to be prepared and always social, emotional, physical, as well as educational. We also know that, we also want intermediate and middle school students to succeed. I think all of us can relate to that difficult time of life during the middle school when children, young adolescents are challenged with all kinds of things, drugs, other kinds of behavioral issues. But we want them to be healthy. So we set up a target outcome where those middle school and intermediate students improve their health knowledge, develop communication and life skills, and avoid specific risky behaviors. We think this will lead to safer schools and positive social environment that affect both educational and social outcomes. And then in terms of basic needs, we want to provide accurate information to people about the needs in the community. We do that through our 211 system. And then finally, what the United Community Assistance Network is focused on is making sure that those families, and in this case, these are working families, by the way, to support a market-based rent two-bedroom apartment, it requires the average person in Lorraine County to work one and a half jobs. So we know that people are working multiple jobs. We see that all the time. But in this case, working families that experience a temporary disruption in their ability to provide for their basic needs, food, clothing, shelter, and so forth, we want that outcome to be that they resolve that financial crisis and then they develop a plan for avoiding that in the future so that they're a sustainable household. And then finally, we want to make sure that these folks are able to get out of that situation so that they can actually develop a financially sustainable household with income appropriate to their needs, building savings and gaining assets to improve financial stability. In the health area, we want to try to prevent those illnesses, metabolic syndrome, obviously related to type 2 diabetes, cardiovascular disease, and even some cancers that are due to obesity and poor diet and exercise. So the goal for the United Community Assistance Network, I've gone through already, is to help people get through these rough patches. Some of the things that we've done with this group over the last two years, we've developed a common intake system, a common database of clients, year-round emergency financial assistance. You know, the typical response of our community until we were able to put together UCAN was some days you had to sign out, we had assistance available, other times you took that sign down. And I've been happy, I'm happy to report that since we started UCAN with these partners, the sign is no longer out that we're out of assistance. We're able to meet these needs. So it's year-round emergency financial assistance, budgeting assistance, case management, benefit screening, so that they understand what benefits they have access to, and additional emergency resources. So our partners include all the Salvation Armies in Lorraine County, Catholic Charities, Neighborhood Alliance, Overland Community Services, obviously, United Way of Greater Lorraine County is a partner as well. Some of our service statistics, we've actually helped through June of 2016, in our first two years of operation, 868 households have been assisted with emergency financial assistance. That results in about 2,600 persons, obviously a lot of children there. We have helped with 405 utility bills, 561 rent and deposits, 78 transportation or other help. The average amount of assistance, $571. So if you think about that, we're able, through this work, to keep people in the home that they have, not disrupting children, having to move from school district to school district, not having to go through that eviction process, we've been able to do that for a little over $500. Can you imagine what that cost would be if that person was booted out of their household, the children were disruptive, you have to go into a homeless shelter? You know, both the human suffering as well as the cost is far greater than that. And an average of 32%, one out of three, do receive case management assistance from the UCAN partner. And the average recidivism rate, this is the thing that I'm most proud of, is a little less than 5% have to come back for assistance after that first help. The number one reason why people seek our assistance, by the way, is because they're working for low wages, low-wage employers, they have no sick leave. So what happens is they get sick, their child gets sick, maybe one of their parents, they have to take some time off of work, they miss a paycheck, before you know it, they're behind in their bills. And so we're able to help them. So I have a few charts here that I wanted to share with you. I think this one's pretty dramatic. You can see what's showing there is Change One. In April of 2014, we began to pilot this collaborative and we went in terms of the unmet need calls. So we were up around 36% of our unmet need calls on 211 were due to the lack of services to do this in our community. And you can see it was a dramatic shift. As soon as UCAN got going, we went down below 10% of the unmet need calls. Overall, 211 use, we have changed that in terms of the 211 phone calls have been exceeded by web and mobile device use over time. It does go up and down, but our calls do average about 1,000 a month. It all, a lot depends on what the needs are, but also in terms of the kind of marketing that we do. But you can see also that our web and mobile users were increasing and we're averaging about 1,400 there. In terms of UCAN, the average household assistance, we keep track of that month to month, and the mean here is $571 a month. It is starting to creep up and I think we're going to see that go up a little bit as rents and so forth go up. And then in terms of our monthly caseload, that's relatively stable, about 33 individuals or families, I should say, on our caseload on a monthly basis. We track the electric payments and the average rent payments that we're making, those are very stable. And then in terms of recidivism, we keep track of that in terms of the percentage of households in case management. We want families to be in case management so that they can learn about budgeting and other, receive other services. But you can also see the percentage of households returning for assistance have gone up and down, but again, is averaging that 4.8%. So I wanted to share with you what we're doing. We also have the Free Tax Prep Coalition that we lead. Last year, we, through volunteers, we prepared over 1,800 tax returns for free. This is, again, for low-income working families. If you've seen some of the articles, there was one in The Plain Dealer on Sunday. The earned income tax credit, which we do through, and the child tax credit, through the Free Tax Prep Coalition here in Lorraine County, are really seen as very effective poverty-fighting tools. And so we have a very robust group of volunteers. You can come and see me at Riverview Plaza on Thursday nights from 4 to 8. I'm one of those volunteer tax preparers. And Jim, I got to tell you, I do not even like doing my own taxes, let alone somebody else's, but I do like helping people and it's a great opportunity to really learn more about the struggles that these people go through. I'll tell you what, if there's any piece of, that I've learned through that is the American work ethic is alive and well, thank you. These people work their butts off for very low wages, you know, to keep their families going and multiple jobs. We had one guy came in, bless his heart, he had 14 W-2s last year. He just couldn't keep a job. He had a disability, but he kept trying. I mean, that's amazing, isn't it? So through the Healthier Buckeye Grant, we're going to be able to embellish the work that we're doing through UCAN. You all know this is just a one-year grant and we realize that, but through the generous donations of, obviously, many individuals and companies, we'll be able to continue this on even if the grant ends. So this is really enabling us to get started with certain things. So I want to go through just a few of the embellishments that we're going to have to this program. We do have, as one of our new partners, the Alcohol and Drug Addiction Services Board, and we'll be able to integrate a behavioral health screening into the process that our case managers go through. And actually, we'll use some of the tools, if you remember, the Alcohol and Drug Addiction Services Board a few years ago had the Pride Grant in the city of Lorraine. Well, it turns out they still have the tablets and the software and access to that that they had then. So we're going to be using that stuff over again. We're going to bring in the Legal Aid Society of Cleveland. They obviously have a Lorraine office to help us with legal issues with folks. And we'll also use Lorraine Metropolitan Housing Authority to help train our case managers in their family self-sufficiency program. And so, United Way will be the sub-grantee and lead collaborator, will also be the UCAN coordinator, the data manager, the continuous improvement lead, and provide the documentation reporting that you would expect. Do you have any questions?
Well, we're expecting big things out of this bill. I mean, the Commissioners made a significant effort to get into this and probably said, I know the need out there. I serve on your utilities, food and shelter board for the United Way.
Yep.
And we're always looking at it as the dollars are being, are regressing and the need is increasing. So anything we can do to help the impoverished.
Yep.
Make a significant difference in our community.
Appreciate that. I think it's a great opportunity to do even, even better. You know, our goal is to go out of business. You know, we want to, we don't want to see people having to beg for things. We want to help them to become self-sufficient and have a sustainable household. You know, I think a lot of times, people say, well, just, you know, teach people in poverty how to budget. Well, if you don't have any money, it's hard to budget. So we want to get them into jobs that are sustainable, ultimately.
The grant was for 187,000?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven thousand?
Yep.
And that represents an expansion of the program by how much roughly?
So last year, we spent, rough figures, Jim, but around 475,000. So about 375. And then we have eight hours a week, 10 case managers throughout Lorraine County. We also leverage funds from all of our partners. And on average in our collaboratives, our partners bring funds that would no, wouldn't be available without the funds that we provide, about 50 cents for every dollar we spend. Salvation Army and others have been great with it.
So this is about a 45 or 50% increase?
Yep.
It's going to be great for the.
It's going to be great. And the great thing is, if Healthier Buckeye goes by and we know these things come and go, we're, we have plans to sustain it with the funds that we have available. So it's not going to go away.
We didn't have a whole lot of time to put this together and I want to just compliment Melissa also.
Oh, yeah.
For putting the council together and getting the grants, making sure they all got submitted in a timely manner and.
Yeah, Melissa was a.
If it wasn't for Melissa, this wouldn't happen too.
It's a, it's a great, a great partnership and also want to commend Christine Metusak Plasse on my staff who really led the effort to, you know, make sure all the i's were dotted and the t's were crossed as well. So Melissa and Christine worked together really well.
You know, we were able to submit three grants and thankfully, one got funded. And I think the turnaround was less than 30 days from forming the whole Buckeye Council and to the Board of Commissioners for allowing use of the Children and Family First Council Act, because most of the players that were required by the Buckeye were already on the Children and Family First Council. So we simply designated, basically designated the Children and Family First Council as the Buckeye Council. So we were able to make that rapid turnaround and then, of course, the people who submitted grants, I don't know if you've ever written a grant, but trying to get that thing turned around in two or three weeks and doing the wordsmithing on it and all the work, it's really a significant effort to get that tuned up where it's going to make an impact on the people reviewing them. So it was a great grant application.
Thank you. Yeah, you know how it is with grants, Jim. It's like, oh, great, there's a grant. Oh, crap, there's a grant. You know, I'm going to lose a few weekends working, you know?
Well, hopefully they'll have another round next year because I understand they're going to try to continue to fund this initiative at the state.
That'd be great. We're, be glad to partner with you, really on this grant or anything else. I think it's wonderful when government, public sector, the nonprofit sector, and the corporate sector can all work together. We can make this a better place for everybody.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
I will move. You needed a second.
For what? Oh.
For the.
Oh, okay. Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Under resolutions, there are no investments, appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Under the airport accept grant offer and enter in agreement with FAA for rehab taxi way B, full parallel construction, the amount of $817,948 with a 5% local match of $40,897.40.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Cordez, anything you want to add to this? It's only 40 grand to get 800.
Well, and thankfully, we were able to get the five from the state. Usually, this is a 10% match. We're getting assistance from the state on this with the five of the 10% required locally. Good job to Karen Davis, working on this. Quite frankly, I couldn't do a lot of this without her. She's really become very knowledgeable in this end of getting the FAA money and the relationships that we've established with the folks out of Detroit. But as I need to remind you, and I always do, you take this money and it's a 20-year marriage, minimum, from the date of when you receive it. We continue to get criticized for the operation of the airport by a lot of the citizenry in Lorraine County, but without this money, you still have to do this work. Because they'll come in and they'll tell you it has to be done because they inspect the airports quite regularly. And then if you don't do it, then they'll take you to federal court and they'll sue you until you do do it. There's really no way to exit this relationship in a good fashion except to have a lot of money to buy them out. And I don't see that happening anytime soon. So we really have little ability not to do this and not to find the 5% match that we need to get this work done.
Thank you.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorize various personnel actions as indicated on summer sheet from place with the six Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner Kayla. I do have potential hires at the Collection Center. I do want to talk about some potential hires at, maybe at 911. Also, update on ongoing labor negotiations with the auto workers at Children's Services and pending litigation. All three topics are allowed under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions. So I'd ask, it's a conclusion of our regular board meeting this morning, we go into executive session to discuss those items. Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading of the minutes of August 31st?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Aye.
Authorize payment of $1,000 to Reickland Roberts Funeral Home, Illyria, for indigent veteran Claude Frederick White, Lorraine Incurrence with the ORC 5901.25.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Aye.
Under community development, award various contracts for homeowners to receive grant assistance from CHIP, Burgomere 14, homeowner rehab activity, which includes contingencies for any unforeseen change orders to be paid from account CHIP, Burgomere 14, home repair. One modern roofing, Seven Hills, in the amount of $4,838 for Pam Grega at 35369 West Road Grafton. Old Town Remodeling and Restoration, Mylan, in the amount of $30,525 from James Johnson, Jr., 920 Kimberly Circle Overland, Green Home Solutions Cleveland, in the amount of $37,802 for Kenneth and Mary Houston at 832 Irving Park, Sheffield Lake. And then Old Town Remodeling and Restoration, Mylan, in the amount of $45,733 for Jenny Lanning at 128 Oakwood, Avon Lake.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Aye.
Job and Family authorize purchase service agreement with various transportation companies to provide non-emergency medical transportation services for state fiscal year '17, effective October 1, 2016, through June 30, 2017. Authorize direct to execute on behalf of Court of Prosecutor's Approval to form one Lorraine County Transit Illyria in the amount of not to exceed 300,000 and Provider Drive Cleveland in the amount not to exceed 300,000.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Cordez?
Yeah, just for a moment, as you know, with some of the funds that travel through Job and Family Services Department are eligible to be used as match monies on other federal monies. And we're trying to leverage that. Right now, this is the first time we've been successful at bidding on this contract through transit. I have a lot of excitement about the potential and a lot of trepidation about how we need to be successful right out of the chute with this. We really can't afford not to produce results, but it's a new, it's a new territory for us. It's a new area. So we're going to be watching it closely. It could be the tip of something bigger or it can be a complete disaster. Hopefully, it's the first and not the second. But I'm really pleased that we're heading down this road and at least giving this a try. And it should add a lot of value to the services in Lorraine County. And I also will tell you, it's bringing the cost down so there'll be able to be more value because there's a lower unit cost that we're providing the rides for. And if we're successful, there's additional funds that are available under this contract. But I spoke with Mary Lou and this seemed very suitable to attempt to be successful at this level and we can talk more later in the year if things go well.
And will this 300,000 be matched?
Some of it will. I'm working out the finer particulars on those details. are a little bit different than they are on fixed routing and charter. So, got to be careful where the line's drawn. And of course, we, we don't want to be anti-competitive, because you need to have more than one service in a community. Anybody relies simply on one, if there's a problem with that, then you have, you have no alternative. So I, I think a balanced act between what we're doing here is, is, is quite the right way to go.
Thank you.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Moskowski.
Aye.
Sanitary, approve an interim emergency contract with DL Construction Alaria, the amount of four thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars for immediate repairs of failed sanitary connection at two-eighty-three Taylor Street, Amherst, paid from the sanitary repair maintenance account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Moskowski.
Aye.
Under the engineer, approve an interim LPA agreement with ODOT to administer, administer design qualification of bidders, competitive bid letting, construction inspection of project for Cooper Foster Park Road project for state fiscal year nineteen. Authorized engineer to execute on behalf of Court of Prosecutors approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
This has been a long project, Cooper Foster Park Road widening, finally.
I think, I think the conversations predate you guys as well.
Yes, it does.
Okay?
Yeah.
They predate our sitting on city council in Lorraine.
Is it really going to see the light of day?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Well, Lorraine and Amherst hopefully are cooperating, because you have one side of the streets Lorraine, the other side of the street is Amherst, so...
Right down the middle is the border, and every time we've got one entity lined up, the other entity's blocked, and nothing's happened.
Both on board, and two and a half million from Nowaka.
Are we going all the way down to the bridge?
No, we're going, it's approximately where the Pure Gas Station is, Burger King, to Overland Avenue.
So what about on the other side of the, well, that's four lanes on that side. I thought we were going to the bridge at one time and widening that whole intersection.
Nope. This is from the Burger King, approximately the Pure Gas Station, in this area, up to Overland Avenue.
What about the crazy light by Sears, the old Sears Hardware?
I believe they're realigning everything.
I sure hope so.
They talked about realigning that like seven or eight years ago.
Right.
It's a mess over there, so, yeah, it'd be great.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Moskowski.
Aye.
Approve an interim LPA agreement with ODOT to administer design qualification of bidders, competitive bid letting, construction and inspection of project for Whitney Road Bridge Project for state fiscal year twenty, and authorize engineer to execute on behalf of Court of Prosecutors approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Moskowski.
Aye.
Approve an interim general engineering service agreement with Katie McCartney and Associates, Inc., Mansfield, the amount of forty-nine thousand five hundred, as part of a one-year task order to be paid from the engineer project account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Moskowski.
Aye.
Approve an interim emergency contract with Mid-Ohio Structures LLC, Norwalk, in the amount of five thousand, for immediate repairs to Middle Ridge Road, Bridge over North Volks, Southern Railroad, Amherst Township, to be paid from the bridge engineering project account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Moskowski.
Aye.
Execute cooperation agreement with City of Overland for repair and resurfacing of Overland Road from Rush Road to East College Street. Estimated project cost is one million one hundred and forty-four thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars. OPWC application has been submitted for eighty-nine percent of the project. Overland provide eighteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-one, or one point six-five percent, and the engineer will provide a hundred and six thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars, or nine point three-five percent.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Moskowski.
Aye.
Under the sheriff, receiving filing your reports submitted by sheriff of all fines and costs collected for the year next preceding September first, two thousand sixteen, the amount of three hundred and nineteen thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighteen cents, in accordance with the ORC three-eleven-point-sixteen.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Moskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Cordez.
I have no further comments this morning, thank you.
You were just really thinking there, weren't you?
I had a couple things on my mind, but it's been, you know, we'll get, we'll move on.
Mr. Ennis?
I have several matters of pending litigation discussed with you in executive session.
We have a demolition this afternoon, don't we, at two-thirty?
Two-thirty in parallel.
Yeah.
Well, the, if you want to be there, the house is coming down whether you go or don't go, but it's the first home that we're demoing, and we're using DRETAC funds, because it's not in the OFER census area, but it's the first one in Calhoun Township. So, and it's, this is an emergency demo. There's been a fire at the home, it's been vacant, it's been vandalized. You know, the law enforcement and the fire people, they, they want this thing down. That's why we're moving with such urgency.
It doesn't go unless Bill wants it done.
Well, Bill's been annoying me for a while on it, so...
Well, last Wednesday, the Alaria Democrat Party had a function over at Harry Buffalo's, a nice fellowship and really great wings. Thursday, I attended the Community Correction Board meeting. They unanimously endorsed all the levies that we have on the ballot, and also the sales tax that we have coming up in November. I was walking back with one of the probation officers, and they wanted to commend our maintenance department for doing such a great job over at Broad Street, getting that ready for, for the probation air, department to move over there, so that we can work on the courthouse, so...
Can I add a something to that, since you brought that up? I don't know how many, how many people actually do catch our meetings, but sometimes word-of-mouth gets around from the meetings. Beginning real soon, a lot of folks use the parking lot that's adjacent to that Broad Street building for general parking. We took the arms off the gates several years ago, and since we weren't really needing the parking, we've allowed public parking in that, in that lot as a courtesy to the community in Alaria. Probably in about two weeks, and we're posting a notice at the entrance to it, we're going to restrict access to that parking lot, because we will need it for the employees working at adult probation. Hopefully, people read the sign on the way, in, way in and way out, because we'll be aggressively monitoring the, the parking lot. There's a need for about forty-three or forty-four spaces for the employees that are coming and going, and some vehicles that'll be there, and it's a tight fifty split, fit in that lot. And the lot's not in great condition to begin with. We're going to try to do some minor amount of improvement to it, so we can at least get to next spring on it. And for those that wonder what we're doing, this is all part of the courthouse renovation project. This has been a Herculean task by the maintenance department. Adult probation has been a very good partner in this. We're moving all of those folks over to the Broad Building. Rather than pay rents somewhere, we've used what we would pay for rent to make improvements to the building, so we have a long-term structural building. The Port Authority owns the building, but it's zero to the county, as long as the county makes the improvements to the building. It's a great relationship at the end of this. The money that would have went into rent for office space all over the place will have gone to improve, give us a capital improvement. That move will happen on Columbus Day. It should be seamless to the public. We'll be working through the weekend to make sure that Friday, they're serving customers at the courthouse, and Tuesday, they're serving customers at Broad Street. Sounds easy, it never really works out that easy. I remember when we moved everybody into the Justice Center and some of the hiccups we had with that, a few years back, but that's an update on that, and the parking will be very tight over there. I expect some people to be complaining, because we've left that lot open for a number of years, and it's become, people have become accustomed to just pulling into downtown Alaria and being able to go in that lot and park. Sorry for that, but it's unfortunate, but we need it for, we need it for, for the building parking. So I just wanted to give you an update on, you may hear about that.
Elaine George is from the Alcohol and Drug Board, was in my Community Corrections Board meeting also, and she has a couple of events coming up. There's a town hall meeting, it's called All It Takes, and it's going to be Thursday, September twenty-second, from six to eight p.m. at Spitzer's Grand Ballroom. All It Takes is a documentary produced by Storylens, supported through the North Family Foundation, exploring the opiate epidemic in Lorraine County from the point of view of addicts, and through the efforts of those who work to help these addicts recover their lives and their dignity. Also, there's, it's called Generation Found, it's going to be a movie over at Atlas Cinemas. You have to actually purchase these tickets online. That event is going to be September thirteenth at seven o'clock, so, trying to see, where you have to sign up for this. Ohio citizens add activists for addiction recovery. Might have to go to the Addus Board to find out how to get the link to get to this Generation Found, but it's, it's going to be a really good movie for people to see. What else did we do this week? Sunday, Labor Day Festival down at Black River Landing. We had the most beautiful weather, a lot of good, good times, people having a great time, kids on the bouncy houses, and it was a very nice time for everybody down at Black River Landing. Tuesday, yesterday, I served spaghetti at the Lorraine Democrat Women's Club, and that was really good spaghetti by Poggi. And I think that's all I have.
Poggi always does a good job.
He does a great job. So...
Right. Yeah, it was a very busy week, Dem fundraiser. I presented Thursday night, UAW CAP Council, our three levies, the sales tax split between general fund and transit, the crime lab, coroner's levy, and the TB levy. So I did a presentation on those, so we'll see how it goes in regards to endorsements.
You should have got three minutes per category.
They gave me three minutes for all three, so...
It was not enough time.
We tried.
I know.
Labor Fest, again, great job, great turnout, a ton of people there, they just did a really good job. Also, Democrat women, again. Also, condolences to the family of Tom Ryan. Tom Ryan passed away this week. Tom are very good friends for a very long time. We served on the Palace Board for years together. Plus, as a downtown businessman, Tom was with Lorraine National Downtown. Wonderful family.
Well, he was on our CDVG loan review...
He was getting there, exactly.
...board for a very, very long period of time. In fact, I think he's still listed as a member. He was living in Florida, but when he was up here, he would want to do a little work with us. Since it's, it's a volunteer position, we always have a problem getting financial people on there. We, we left him as a courtesy, but he did a lot of fine work with us on CDVG over a number of years.
So, lost Tom Ryan. Again, a great guy, condolences to his family. Big loss to the community, especially in the city of Lorraine, because he did so much, so...
Absolutely.
End of my report.
For correspondence.
Will the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Moskowski.
Aye.
I will comment.
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning? Quiet today.
We're all running up together.
They're all running up. Seeing none, I'll make the motion to move into executive session, as outlined by the county administrator and the county prosecutor.
All second.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Moskowski.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting.